Cigarettes to children, alcohol and cigarettes to children. And I want to provide you with this because it goes to demonstrate how difficult it is to keep marijuana out of the hands of kids. Because it is being marketed and directed to children. It looks like candy, it looks like what you see in your Halloween bag when you get home. And I just want you to take a look at it because I think that this picture speaks a thousand words in terms of what the risks are to our children. So I will go ahead and leave us with our questions. Thank you. Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you very much. Ken Albert.
Senator President, following members of the committee and criminal justice committee, my name is Ken Albert. I'm the director and chief operating officer of the Maine Center for Disease Control and Prevention. I'm actually here today on behalf of our acting chief health officer, Chris Bezulo, who has seen patients this afternoon. Otherwise, he would have been here to speak with you himself in opposition to both bills. Dr. Bezulo would say to you that our department is committed to supporting Maine residents leading safe, healthy, and productive lives. We believe that at this time, legalizing the possession of marijuana, one ounce of marijuana per individual, 21 years of age or older, is counter to the health promotion efforts of our department. Marijuana use has significant health impacts with physical signs including altered perception of time, fear, distrust, panic, anxiety, depression, inattentiveness, memory loss, decreased reaction time, impaired judgment, increased heart rate, and increased blood pressure. Probing more deeply, Dr. Bezulo would tell you, a few more concerns he has. Potency of marijuana varies greatly depending upon the strain and the form of ingestion as you heard here today. The average THC concentration has also increased over time as you heard here today. Marijuana smoke contains three times the amount of tar from tobacco smoke and 50 percent more carcinogens. People who use marijuana have higher rates of death from fatal motor vehicle accidents, AIDS, and lung cancer. From 2005 to 2011, the call-in rate to poison control centers in states that decriminalize marijuana increased by more than 30 percent per year, 30 percent. While the call-in rates in non-legal states did not change, 9 percent of all users become addicted to marijuana. Number increases among those who start young and among people who use marijuana daily. Dr. Bezulo would say that young are especially at risk. Prenatal exposure influences brain development and can result in permanent cognitive impairment including ADHD, learning deficits, and reduction in fetal growth. The human brain begins to develop a neuro and used to mature into young adult until approximately 25 years of age. In school, children exposed to marijuana prenatally are more likely to show gaps in problem-solving skills, memory, and the ability to remain attentive. Marijuana can be a gateway product, as you've heard here today. Marijuana use typically precedes rather than follows initiation of any other illicit drug use. So it precedes other illicit drug use. According to the Maine Integrated Youth Health Survey, although the use of marijuana has remained stable since 2012, there are less than 80 today reporting that marijuana is harmful. That's concerning to the department. And for older individuals, the risk also exists. So marijuana smoking is associated with inflammation of large airways, increased airway resistance, and lung hyperinflation, all of which are consistent with developing chronic bronchitis. In one study, marijuana users had a four to eight-fold increase in heart attack risk during the first hour after smoking a drug, including that the risk is greater in older individuals than those with cardiac vulnerabilities. Data suggests that long-term use of marijuana increases the risk of depression, leads to more pronounced suicidal ideation, and heightens risk of suicidal attempts. A growing body of literature also supports the relationship between marijuana use and psychotic disorders with acute and transient effects, acute and persistent effects, and delayed and persistent effects that bear striking resemblance to symptoms of schizophrenia, as seen in both observational and experimental studies. In closing, the department believes that there should not be a rush to legalize without fully understanding the medical, social, and financial implications of such a move. And Dr. Bezulo will be happy to be available to you for questions during your work session.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions? Is Sheldon Wheeler here?
Yes. Senator Rosen, Representative Powell, members of the joint standing committee on criminal justice and public safety. I'm Sheldon Wheeler, Director of the Maine Office of Substance Abuse and Medical Services at DHHS. I'm here today to speak in opposition to LD 1380 and 1401. I will work on, kind of to the chase of my five or six pages of testimony. Today's, as you've heard, marijuana is far more potent, and the strength and purity is often unpredictable or unknown. The average THC content in marijuana has increased from 3 percent in many communities more than 12 in 2012. Newly popular methods of smoking or eating THC-rich hash oil extracted from the marijuana plant can deliver very high levels of THC to the user. The average marijuana extract includes over 50 percent THC with some samples in excess of 80 percent. It really is not your grandfather's beef, as was referenced earlier. Research has established that marijuana is addictive and that it is three times more likely to lead to dependence among adolescents than adults. About 1 in 6 of those who start using marijuana in their teenage years develop an addiction. In 2014, there were 954 primary treatment admissions for marijuana in Maine, and Mainers under the age of 18 accounted for more than 30 percent or 326 percent of these admissions. And all there were 4,604 treatment admissions for marijuana in 2014. Speaking to a question that Representative Blong asked earlier, marijuana use keeps people from doing their best in school, work, and learning new skills. Marijuana use in teens has been linked to lower academic performance and reduced job prospects. Results from the 2013 Maine Youth Integrated Health Survey indicate that of the students reported to have used marijuana in the past 30 days, approximately 50 percent reported that they received Ps and/or Fs. By contrast, the students who reported that they received As, approximately 12 percent reported use in the last month. And to speak to a question asked earlier by Representative Timmons, at the back of my testimony is two sheets. One representing marijuana use in the past month by age group, and the other, and there's a certainly not, I can't tell you the statistical one-to-one correlation, but there is a correlation and it is not without coincidence that the perception of harm relates to use. And so you can look at the chart, which speaks to the perceptions of harm of smoking marijuana more than once a month, and see where Maine falls by age category, and then you can crosswalk that to the marijuana use. Yeah, I thought that was just some information that helped answer your questions.
Any questions for Mr. Wheeler? Seeing that, thank you. Oh, what we discussed last week.
Excuse me, and I'm going through your, I don't know, you're quoting a lot of studies that were done?
Yes, on the, on the back, there are the references.
Oh, that might be in paintball or penball. Okay, could you, is it available here in this package? What those, where those studies came from?
Absolutely, the citations are from sources such as the National Institute of Medicine, the Women of Medical Journal, American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry and so forth. On that side of the page, just see the citations.
I got it right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tina Penn Gill.
Good afternoon, Senator Rosen, Representative Powell, and distinguished members of the committee. Thank you for having us today and being patient. My name is Tina Penn Gill, I'm the executive director of the Maine Public Health Association. We're an organization that represents over 400 public health professionals across the state. Our association has multiple concerns about legalizing recreational use of the most commonly used illicit drug in the United States, where especially in a state where it's already decriminalized and medicinal use is permitted. As you're deliberating on these bills, we urge you to consider and prepare for the escalation in social and health costs that will result from creating a third legal drug in this country. Because there is no reason to think that laws limiting marijuana to adults will be any more successful than comparable laws for cigarettes or alcohol. We're an association of science, we depend on data and evidence to make our decisions and how we're going to advocate on bills. You'll find a lot of that data in the separate handout. They've also been referenced by the past few speakers, but we urge you to look at those as well as another small picture that are some edibles that were taken off of a website in Colorado. That was exactly like gummy bears that my nine-year-old would really like to ingest. So I'm not going to go over the science that has already been pointed out. I just would ask you again, or urge you to consider using science to guide your decision-making, learn from past mistakes, and act to prevent the establishment of a big marijuana industry that will benefit from creating and sustaining a new generation of young people addicted to their product. Though we have never taken a big role in terms of medicinal marijuana, we believe in cannabis as a therapeutic agent, we do believe more studies warranted to really consider marijuana as a recreational drug and legalizing it. We would instead suggest, instead of passing a law, maybe instead friendly suggestion to really pull together a study commission or something of that sort to really spend more time researching potential implications, taking time to truly understand the direct and indirect costs. The public education that will be necessary to make sure our youth rates don't skyrocket, to see what it will take to ensure that our youngest Mainers are protected from marketing strategies directed at them like the gummy bear picture, and to make sure funds are available to test drivers for marijuana use and enforce any potential law that might go into effect. And I just want to draw, it's really, I work mostly in the tobacco field, I know some of you actually from that work, as the number one cause of disease and death in tobacco, we spend most of our time and capacity there. But I feel a little compelled to draw some comparisons to tobacco because some of the bill sponsors did the same thing. And here's just really quick what I want you to know, and it takes a lot of resources to prevent young people from using tobacco, a lot of resources. Just because it's only legal for people over 21, it takes well-funded community and education programs, it takes high prices on those products because youths are high price sensitive, it takes media and outreach campaigns, it takes enforcement strategies, it takes a lot of local and state policies by invested legislators like yourself, and it takes a culture of people saying we don't condone unhealthy behaviors. So I just, I just want to say, if this type of law passes, I was sitting there predicting how I'm going to be in front of you and your colleagues at DHHS and appropriate areas asking for more and more money down in the future to deal with the probably unanticipated and unintended consequences of this type of bill. So on behalf of MPHA, we urge you to pass, ought not to pass on both these bills. Thank you very much.
Representative McJoy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's a question I probably should ask a doctor or something, but I'll mention it. I think about a month, one and a half back, I was listening to the news, and on television they were talking about a 17-year-old male that was brought into the hospital, and they do not know what was going on with him. And after a series of tests, they found that it was liquid around his heart. And what the diagnosis was is it was from smoking marijuana that produced that chemical through his lungs, the poison was in there, and went into that cavity. Did you hear anything about that?
I did not, and you were right, wrong person. I don't master the motherfucking part.
Yeah, I thought it was right time to break it out on top of that, it's on.
There may be someone here that could answer that question.
Thank, yeah, thank you, I appreciate that.
Senator Jazos.
Yeah, I'm glad you're here. Have you spent much time communicating with your coworkers in other states, you know, the people that work on Colorado or, have you spent much time on the phone or communication with them?
A limited, a limited amount, yes. I have spoken with folks at the Colorado Department of Health. I don't work for the state, but I have spoken to folks there who do work for the Department of Health in there, and some of their concerns and some of what they are seeing currently and are predicting in the future are encapsulated in our testimony.
Thank you for your testimony. Raya.
Senator Rosen, Representative Powell, and distinguished members of the Criminal Justice and Public Safety Committee. My name is Raya Culetas, and I represent the Maine Alliance to Prevent Substance Abuse, and we're an affiliate program of Maysap. We heard from Pat here a little earlier. I'm here today to oppose both LD 1380 and 1401. The challenges that these bills bring to the safety and health of the people up in the state of Maine are grave, the implications of setting up commercial marijuana markets will yield dramatic increase in access to the drug, and particularly to our most vulnerable populations, including our youth. So the opportunity to consider the harmful effects of a drug, if it's illegal or legal, on the health of individuals is determined not only by potency, but the availability and social acceptability. The tipping point to consider is the impact on quality of life and the significant threats to the health and safety of our youth and vulnerable populations. So, I mean, there's several points in my testimony, and I'll let you read through that, but I want to get to the highlights. We hear the stories of those who use marijuana medically, and throughout this legislative session, the use of marijuana as a medicine has been heard in a variety of other committees. It begs the question, what other medicines are set forth to be utilized legally for recreation? I've also heard stories from parents and community leaders, and one of the frequent concern is cannabis food and cannabis candy. Just another example of an edible is a pot tart, and that's inspired by a common children's dessert product. You've heard some other reports from Haida, Rocky Mountain report, but just one that stood out is marijuana-related exposures to children ages 0 to 5 was for in 2006 in the state of Colorado before it was legal, avoiding medical marijuana was legal. And then in 2014, 38 children, 35 years old, were reported to have an accidental ingestion, and that's 950 percent increase. So, you know, we talk, we heard the essence of a righteous and just cause, and that supply meets demand, and I say if you build it, you will come. So besides the driving safety concerns, you heard from Lieutenant Scott, one other piece is in addition to the perception of harm for Maine household students going down, they're more eight times likely to use. So let's, let's support the concept of ensuring youth and communities of Maine can drive safely on our roads and have healthy children, and employers who are capable and competent. So for these reasons, Matt opposes both bills. Thank you for hearing the testimony, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Raya? Seeing Senator Jazos, he put his hand up.
Yes, the same question I've been asking. I do have communications with other organizations around the country, especially in Colorado or the states that have gone through this.
I've had an anecdotal indirect communication with a personal friend who has listed off reasons of what has gone on in Colorado since the legalization of recreational marijuana. And I asked her after a few minutes of her talking to me, I said, are you reading off a little piece of paper that I'm going to use as a testimony?
Because the reason I ask that is that, as this bill's been similar to been here in the past, we've often said, let's see what happens in Colorado and other states. And so I'm trying to get to what's happening in other states by asking some of the people that testified to those questions, especially to people in South Dakota or Oregon that all want to talk. Is that my good?
I have not had direct communication with public health officials, but I am participating in a work group that does have a member who reports out on current alliances with Colorado. So, not a direct.
Representative McJoy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, on your paper here, all the way down, it says in 2006 before legalization, Colorado was ranked 14 in the nation for marijuana use by 12 17-year-olds, and in 2013, it was third. And what type of study was that, do you know? Was it a sanctioned study from a health organization or from something? Do we know that?
I don't know the exact citation, and anything that is, you know, perhaps just more cited, cited is on the back of that small fonte. However, I can get that for you, or do you allow me to ask, and if somebody could?
Yeah, I think it would be great, you know, because of course, sitting around with questions, we'll get the right and the left, and so we'll have these studies that I've done that show that there's no increase in the school book, and then we'll.
That's a fantastic question, and I am glad you asked, because the citations that are used are typically from journals such as New England Medical Journal, which is a, it's published by the Massachusetts Medical Society, and that is known for its prestige and a weekly general medical journal that publishes new medical research. So there's a lot of validity because it's a peer-reviewed journal, and it has longstanding. One of the magazines as data cited by, earlier, I think it was by Representative Russell, she cited Reason Magazine, which is published by circulation specialists. They also publish Florida Sport Fish. So when you're looking at data, as, I have a graduate degree from Columbia University, and I consider myself also a scientist, when you're looking at data, you have to look at the source and who is collecting it. So if it's, you know, somebody, it's also cited in New York Times editorial. Well, editorials are different than study. I've also, in my testimony, cited studies on the lab set, and I've cited that, and that was a meta-analysis which utilizes the outcomes of several different studies and brings it together to enhance and empower the data. So.
Would you, if you mentioned that, if you're probably trying to, can I sort of?
Sure, I would be happy to get that cited.
Which, please, I think it would be very helpful, for me anyway.
I'll get it to you, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Sally.
Hello, hi, that must be me. Sally Manana. And I have access to the survey that we did in our area for all of you, so should I just, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Hello, Senator Rosen, Representative Powell, and esteemed members of the Joint Committee of Criminal Justice and Public Safety. My name is Sally Manana. I'm the Substance Abuse Prevention Coordinator for the Chisbee Healthy Coalition, which serves nine communities in Southern York County. What you're getting in front of you are the results of a survey that we did of our constituents, of folks that we work with, some folks that we don't work with but who get our regular online newsletter. What we do in the Chisbee Healthy Coalition, we get funding from state, federal, and private donations to serve as part of the Maine's Public Health Infrospection and implement substance abuse prevention strategies in collaboration with community members. So what you will see there are the responses from 100 people. I was very happy that we got 1100. We sent the survey out to 382 people in Southern York County, and it's totally anonymous. And what we found was some of the people wanted to share their name and contact info. You will see at the very end, I've clipped on several of the responses from people who wanted to be identified. They include responses of a South Corrick School Resource Officer, an Assistant District Attorney from the Board of County, the Director of Day One Treatment and Local Business Fair, and a parent. And I'll just point out that not everyone in the responded to our survey is anti-legalization. Of the 100 people that pulled it out, 79 said they would be against it, 21 said they would for it, they would be for it, excuse me. I thought it was interesting in looking at a lot of responses of the people who are for legalization, even though I told, we told them in the question, we educated people about the fact that Maine already has a very liberal decriminalization law. We already allow people to possess up to two and a half ounces, which is quite a lot of marijuana, with only the potential for a civil offense if they have not committed any other crime. So even though that was put into the question, we still have people saying they would be for legalization because they think Maine should decriminalize marijuana and not put people in jail for possessing it. So I just wanted to point that out. About 55 parents filled it out, six youth, many of whom are here today and will talk to you in a moment, nine law enforcement, and I thought I would share with you, since you are the Public Safety Committee and Criminal Justice, the responses of our law enforcement officers. We work with them on a very regular basis, we meet with them monthly, and they were very anxious to share their opinions this way anonymously, although one did put his name to his answers. These are some of the things they said when asked, what problems would legalization cost? It leads to other drug use, it leads to other medical issues. A problem would be being able to successfully monitor people who are growing it and dispensing it and keeping it out of the hands of youth. Another problem would be impaired drivers, people will not respect that. Another police officer said, this will just add up to more marijuana on the streets. I also believe there will be an increase in impaired driving as the pro marijuana camp continues to say marijuana is safer than alcohol. I believe this will lead to people believing more than they already do that it is okay to get high and drive a vehicle. One officer said Maine will become the origin for illegal marijuana sales to other nearby states who have not legalized it, and we know from the Rocky Mountain Haida report that that is very much the case. In fact, the state of Nebraska is suing the state of Colorado because Nebraska's law enforcement costs have increased so exponentially in dealing with drugs that come to Nebraska from Colorado. Another law enforcement officer said it will not be the silver bullet to financial success for the government, as some feel, and has been a cash business forever, and although some revenue will be realized, the underlying problems will remain. What about the cost of healthcare expenses related to long use that have not been factored in and will ultimately end up on the consumer? Another law enforcement officer says biggest problem will be keeping it out of the hands of youth, people selling or giving it to minors, the state will not be able to control its use. One person who responded said, I don't support any laws that normalize youth because we know use increases with legalization. We already have a nation of addicts, why would we add to the problem? Furthermore, it sends a message to youth that use is okay. Now, when asked, what are the benefits of legalization, these are some of the things that law enforcement say, would say. It might free up time for police officers that spend considerable time enforcing, but it will create other problems. One law enforcement said, officer said, somebody, somewhere will make some money.
Our Senator Powell?
Another, yes. Thank you, I'm sorry. And I just wanted to add, though, that I do have an answer, almost an answer to someone's question, Representative Garish, who's right here, about the effect on workplaces. There's actually a larger study from out of Colorado about that, very fast, and all the legal issues and ramifications and complications, which we thought we had up on our website, cth.org, but we checked, and it isn't up there, but we will make sure we get a link to it. I just wanted to, thank you for your time. I hope you will read through the comments in this report, especially the folks that said that they would put their names to it, and add that as part of my job, I have and add that as part of my job, I have access to so many reports and data and scientific reports, I'd be happy to email any of those to you, and many of the resources, including Rocky Mountain Hyde, are on our website as well. So thank you for your time, and I hope you have a chance to look at the comments from the folks in your communities.
Representative Fowle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've listened to what's taken place since nineteen seventy-two, but I'm kind of curious, what was the addiction level for marijuana before President Nixon actually put it on my coffee list?
I can't answer that question.
No, but I didn't know you might have a chance to, when you have a chance to get the reports, or somebody else can give you that information.
I could, we, we'll try to get that, I will say that I've heard people today talking about addiction rates, and what we look at in the field of prevention is we look at past thirty-day use, and so if we look at past thirty-day use amongst our youth, it has remained steady in Maine, although in some of my communities that I work in, it has actually gone up. And so I can try to get that data for you, from before nineteen seventy-two, that's specifically what you're looking at?
Yes, because that's what I, it was close.
Okay, cool, thank you. Try to do that for you.
Representative Lejoy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sally, I remember back, I think it was last fall or early winter.
Yep.
There was a forum, was it in Welsa?
Bob Doyle.
Right, I wasn't able to attend, and there was a gentleman there from Colorado.
Bob Doyle, yep.
Okay, wasn't his testimony that, and he was from Colorado, that they wish they could go back?
So I'm glad you brought that up, because somebody else had a question about, do we talk with folks from Colorado and Washington? I do regularly participate in a nationwide phone call with folks from across the country around this issue, and Bob Doyle is a public health expert, and we did bring him to speak. The videotape of his speech is on our website, so people can still watch it. He, he and Tom Gorman from Rocky Mountain Hyde have both said that there are a lot of folks working on actually repealing the law, and that the folks in Colorado really didn't realize what they were voting for, to be quite honest. They thought they were voting for what you heard today, an adult having the freedom to do something, and really what they're getting is this out-of-control industry that markets to youth, and you'll hear more about that from the youth from our area that are gonna talk about it. But I, I, that's definitely a message we hear from Colorado, and I do know that the public health experts out there who have worked for a year or more on, on preparing for legalization, and they have not been prepared for the mess that they're seeing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You're welcome, thank you.
Gina?
Hello, my name is Gina Kriztos Brodsky, and I've been working with teens and their families for fifteen years. Past father went to Ben Dork High School as a licensed school counselor and substance abuse counselor. On Monday afternoons, I also run a support group called Making Change for Young People Ages Fourteen to Twenty-One Who Are Considering or Who Are Committed to Substance Abuse Recovery. I have driven students and families to rehab, assisted families in getting all sorts of necessary treatment and support, and to date have spent over ten thousand clinically-supervised hours in the prevention and substance abuse counseling fields. Quite simply, pot is a very, very big deal in my world, and more importantly, in the lives of many students I've been honored to work with. In my world of work, marijuana is an invasive, persistent deterrent to motivation, success, drive, good grades, and happiness. It's a gateway drug that when experimented within your teens, greatly increases your chance of substance abuse and addiction in adulthood, regardless of family history. It is a psychoactive substance that affects every major bodily function, including growth hormone control, something really needed for activities like driving. It disrupts brain function critical to motivation, memory, learning, judgment, and behavior control. For teens, it can be a recipe for disaster. Each year, I have seen this harmless substance move a teen from experimentation to dependence in a matter of months. If marijuana is so harmless, why were there over five hundred thousand marijuana-related ER visits in our country in two thousand and fourteen alone? Why do I have teens who cannot seem to go to sleep without smoking marijuana, or last a school day without sneaking out to do the same? We all know that having substances of any kind in your home increases access to teens. With all this talk about heroin and prescription drug abuse recently, it's easy to lose focus that our number one and number two drugs of choice among teens is still alcohol and marijuana. We're about to make the same decision with marijuana by increasing access to our most vulnerable population. On Making Change, we ask the same questions every week, and one of which is what increases the likelihood that you will use it almost one hundred percent of the time? The answer from my teens is access and opportunity. I do not have the millions of dollars that the pro-marijuana folks have to put the time and energy into negative battles, billboards, other campaign initiatives to combat this, but I know there are many of us educators and parents wondering why you're about to make parenting and educating even harder for us. We cannot prevent so many things from happening to our children. Anya, today, you have the chance to take a stand and keep our children and some adults who are lying about the harmlessness safe. I am petrified both professionally and personally. This marijuana snowball is building so fast, no one seems to be able to stop the momentum. We jumped right into medical marijuana without figuring out how the tax is truly regulated. Those states which have implemented medical marijuana ballot initiatives have some of the highest addiction rates in the country. Let me be clear, I do believe there are potential medicinal benefits that can be extracted and put in pill form and not make you high, but we've not found a way to successfully supervise and engage the right methods for the right people. It's estimated that less than two percent of the population for which medicinal marijuana was designed for are actually benefiting. Then we decriminalize marijuana mostly because it's a nuisance to deal with on different levels, and so is putting my three-year-old in timeout time over and over again, but limit setting is essential and healthy for his development. Legislators, you've been elected to help protect and serve our community, please slow down this snowball, we have not thought it through. We're collectively telling our children that it's all no big deal, and I assure you, they unfortunately received the message loud and clear. Legalization and decriminalization has led to a lower perception of harm all over the place, which makes working with teens exceptionally hard.
We're gonna have to ask you to wrap up.
I will wrap up. I want to quickly make a comment to Lydia Blum, fellow community...